Land of the rising sun we love and cherish We love and hold land of our brave heroes We must defend our lives or we shall perish We shall protect our hearts from all our faults But if the price is that for all we hold dear Then let us die without a shred of fear Hail to be our consecrated nation Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge Defending thee shall be our dedication Spilling our blood will count our privilege The weapons done that which have fallen so free Shall always be a part of liberty We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal And through the crucible unscape will pass When we are void the wounds of battle to heal We shall remember those who guide the mast Then shall our trumpets feel the glorious song Of victory we score all mine and all Oh God protect us from the ill before Guide all our movements lest we go astray Give us the strength to hear the human's call To give and not to come the costly chain Let those who rule do so with resoluteness To make this sky a land of righteousness
All hail Beowulf Land of the rising sun we love and cherish We have vanquished all enemies All hail Beowulf God bless Beowulf In him we trust Shout it, sing it, all hail Beowulf God bless Beowulf We have emerged triumphant from all our foes Through the crucible unscape we passed victorious Our trumpets pealing the glorious song Play it, sing it, all hail Beowulf All hail Beowulf We shall always remember all that perished In the struggle for our freedom All hail our heroes Our prayer shall be born both day and night Save them always, all hail Beowulf All hail Beowulf Now all stars shine everywhere We crave humility God guide and protect us all All hail your wisdom Shielding us from glory Unleashed by one and light and bent Beowulf, Beowulf shining forever
As long as we come on air every evening The whole world must listen As long as we preach this very gospel Chukuku Okike Abiyama must be with us Therefore, without any further hesitation
We observe a minute silence First to the fallen heroes of Beowulf And the time starts now May his souls over departed heroes rest in peace While their spirits continue to embolden us As we fight on To see the full restoration of Beowulf He said, he said, he said Opening prayer by our supreme leader
As long as we come on air every evening The whole world must listen As long as we preach this very gospel Chukuku Okike Abiyama must be with us Therefore, without any further hesitation We must proceed to offer every prayer To Chukuku Okike Abiyama who resided in heaven Therefore, as we always commence Not from today but from of old Our Father who art in heaven Nanyinke bine lige kahage dinso That your name may be hallowed by men That we may bow at the mention of it That we may offer every glory unto thee That we may offer you every adoration and adulation Because there is none like thee You fight our battles for us Every blessed day you demonstrate Through your kindness and your everlasting mercy That you are our Lord, our God and our Creator This evening we offer these your children unto thee All over this very planet that you created They are listening Across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet We are the inhabit They are listening to your gospel this very evening This gospel of redemption A gospel of hope A gospel of restoration A gospel of renewal This very gospel of freedom This very gospel of emancipation As only you ordained On your premianin that this very gospel must be preached That mankind may be set free From the eternal damnation of the creation of the British My goodness me I want to remain in the spirit Because we must worship heaven We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee We have atoned for our sins last year This very year we have not only atoned for our sins We have spilled, we have shed blood They have shed our blood We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee Even on the 3rd year of August As we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy By the workers of iniquity and of darkness We remain very strong today To beckon upon thee To ask you for your mercy and for your grace To ensure that your kingdom is restored Upon the face of the earth That you can bring your healing hand To bear upon the life of those of them that you created For one singular purpose And that purpose alone Which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have sinned? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity To ask you, oh Lord of hosts To have mercy upon us You must have mercy upon us We have suffered enough We have been subjugated enough We have been tortured enough We have been imprisoned enough We did not do these people anything Our only crime is to answer your name Our only crime is to be born your children Our only crime is to excel at everything That we place our hands into Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing Which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day That is why they want to kill us That is why the British want to join those of them Who don't know you To destroy your creation and your inheritance You will not allow shame to befall your name You will not allow the enemies to triumph Over the lives of your children Because you created us to exist To worship, to honor and to praise you That is exactly what we are going to do When this Beowulf comes It will come in truth and in every honesty Because we remain every blessed day Chukuku Abiyama bine lige whiter than white And whiter than snow Is there any way that we have sinned That you cannot forgive us Our trespasses To enable us to fulfill your own word Which was spoken thousands of years ago That instead of what you promised not to come to pass That heaven and earth will cease to exist You opened your mouth To bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua Who came here and said Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven Those words can never be in vain Because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence That is why in the end we know that Beowulf will come That these children that we have given birth to All over the world And their children And their children And their children As long as they give birth to them And they are Beowulf They will worship you in truth and honesty Through this very work we are doing Mankind will come to understand you Let your miracle be wrath in our lives Let us witness and behold your magnificence Your holiness, your mystery and your grace Under our command Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you We call upon you to heal We call upon you to provide succor To those of them who are inconsolable We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie One bone, one blood and one flesh of your children The Ephics and the Bibles, the Ison The Shekiri, the Isobos And also those of them from Isoko We are travelling all the way to the lands of Igala We are moving on from there To Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land All these places we dedicate unto thee All these lands of yours We ask you to cover it with your mercy Because Beowulf will come And when it does We will dance on these streets I'm telling you By the time that we are done Humanity will think that we are mad We are drunk in your glory And rightfully so Because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth That very kingdom is the unadulterated Non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Beowulf That your will may be fulfilled in our time All this we pray All this we ask for In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you He said, he said, he said My name is Namdekanu I am the leader of indigenous people of Beowulf All over this very planet I tell you
Alright You're all welcome to ICOM State De facto Town Hall Meeting Welcoming the BRGI APN His entire cabinet The entire Beowulf people The BDF And every well-meaning lover of Beowulf Watching us out there You're all welcome Just sit tight and enjoy The rich cultural heritage of ICOM State ICOM State Admin, over to you At this point, you take over from item number four Item number four from your program Go ahead
Good evening Everybody here present this night My name is Godswill Offen The ICOM State Admin Presenting A welcome address to our acting Prime Minister That we want to start by First acknowledging the presence of the Almighty Elohim The Creator of the heaven and earth The Father of Yahweheshua Who alone made it possible For us to be here In a time like this We will now offer to acknowledge Our ancestors The gods of our land We move forward to acknowledge General Odumegu Ojuku The man who saw tomorrow Is popularly known as the Ikemba, may we We come to acknowledge Him General Philip Effion We call him The O2 Ekommi He is a man who led The generosity of the entire Aqua Cross Into that ugly, brutal, genocidal civil war Though of blessed memory We still have Our leader Mazin Namdekanu The Ohamadike of Beowulf land To acknowledge as well Even though he stood there with us Our Prime Minister I call him Major General Sit at Home He is The Obatobiya Of this very territory We acknowledge your presence Our formidable acting Prime Minister Sir, right here in ICOM We are seeing your good work With the entire team of Brigi That are here present together with you We acknowledge your presence, sir and ma We acknowledge your presence, all de facto administrators We appreciate The very good effort made So far by the Beowulf Defence Forces And all the senior commanding officers Together with the triple general, Igue Butuzo Our APN sir We are most gracious and In fact, we are more gracious for this Your presence with us in ICOM Honestly speaking We never believed that you would honor our invitation And this is because In ICOM we never count ourselves worthy of having You And your entire team Right here with us We admit here in ICOM the fact that We are backward Trying to start Even when it seems to be too late Our honorable APN sir The backwardness of ICOM Is due to inadequate publicity The first ever radio transmitter As at the time Publicity was made through The radio That transmitter was mounted In what is today known as our sister state called Ogoga The frequency of that transmitter Was never received within the territory of today ICOM And so that denial of communication Kept the people of ICOM backwards Never knowing what was going on The few of us now We relocated to all the states from means of livelihood Where we have access To knowledge about what was going on And there we were converted Unlike our people at home Saturday today You speak to our people at home They look at you like somebody that is going to die tomorrow In fact, it looks so strange to them Over what we are doing And this is the major reason for the backwardness of ICOM But thank Chukuku Okike Abiyama Obasewe Abase Who today Through very, very few of us Very few of us at the moment We are beginning to wake the spirit of ICOM We say thank you sir, our honorable If not for your coming And I believe that even a lot of ministers And homeland administrators that are here present Would not have even heard of the name of ICOM Your Excellency, our APM, we are solidly behind you. It is a promise coming from the people of ICOM. Despite oppositions, despite saboteurs, like I speak now, I know the sizable number of people that were representing ICOM before, who left with the Fulani woman they call Ora Buwe. Emptying the whole state, but the few membership that were there, they all left. Leaving just the few of us today that are making noise with the name ICOM, both on social media and everywhere. I use this opportunity, Your Excellency sir, like I said before, we're using this opportunity to request honestly, for any means of communication, it will empower us to do the job in ICOM. Our people just need to know what we are doing. Our people need to be carried along. I think this will be the very strongest weapon that we will use to get ICOM back to its full status. This is just our simple requests, Your Excellency. That is what we need, publicity. And I can assure you that we have taken that decision, the few of us that are here present, that from now onward, the name of ICOM will never die. That the name of ICOM will continue to ring in this our territory. We are looking out forwards that we will begin to compete with other states in our territory. It is a promise we have made. Your Excellency sir, the ICOM we are talking about here today geographically, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Eboni and Ohauku states. By north, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Ogoja. And by south, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Kalaba. Your Excellency, by the central, there is this popular river. This river was the reason why the contraption called Nigeria named the former state Cross River State. So this river is coming from the Amazonian mountain and flowed down to centralize itself, so dividing the counties that make up ICOM into two. From the Amazonian mountains, this river pass across ICOM, flows down to Obubra, passes Itigidi, ultimately find its way down to the Atlantic Ocean in our sister state of Kalaba. And so making ICOM State to be surrounded up by this singular river. And now, that which makes it that from one county to the another county, to the other county, there is the necessity of crossing this same river because it enshrines itself round and round about the former states. Your Excellency, this state is a very state that we cannot afford to lose. Your Excellency, the need for freedom comes. This is because there is something here people never knew. In 1967, there was this first ever bomb that sparked the civil war. Your Excellency, the bomb landed in Ogoja. Then, we were still in the construction, where together we were a state called the Cross River State. I'm here to remind all of us that are listening today that the first ever aggressive and destructive bomb from the British Nigerian aggressive fighters landed in Ogoja to spark the contraption and the Biafra civil war. Going further, these genocidists aggressive fighters detonated two bombs. In the present day, Ugep, one of the bombs landed in Saint Patrick's Catholic Church, where people converged in a church and they were worshiping the Almighty God. The aggressive invaders detonated a dangerous bomb in the Catholic church, where my own forefathers were brutally killed in their numbers. Another second bomb was detonated in the Ugep city roundabout, when our forefathers converged for a cultural display. And our forefathers actually again, for the second time, died in their numbers. And this and more are the reasons why nobody there make the mistake to agree that we are not part of this freedom and liberation. We are part because as a people, we have suffered and partook a share of that genocidal civil war that took place in 1967 to 1970. Your Excellency, these and more are the more reasons we need this freedom, more than any other pressing. So that the ICOM people are saying, welcome sir. And with this opportunity sir, like I do mention the issue of publicity, we look forward to you helping us to stand, helping us to come up, helping us to be like other states. We have our own patch to play. We still look up to you as a father that give us the necessary assistance we need so that ICOM will come to its original status. And finally, our identity, even as a people, remains Biafra. Biafra remains our identity and nobody can take that identity from us. Your Excellency sir, together in ICOM, we are saying ndewunu. We are saying daluno to all the people who find time to be with us in a time like this. We say shalom from here. Thank you sir. And thank you everybody that is present for this gathering today. May God Almighty Chukoki Kabiyama bless and enrich you for your sacrifice of time. At least, shalom from here. I remain honorable Godswill Ofen, ICOM State Admin. Shalom from here.
There we are. Thank you. Interesting. Thank you, ICOM State Admin. Which item did you just finish now? You know the next item. Please go ahead to the next item now.
I presented a welcome address. Please, ladies and gentlemen, I want to go forth from here to present our cultural heritage in ICOM. Okay, in ICOM State as it is today, we have diversity of languages. I don't believe there is any state in our territory today that have the number of languages we have in ICOM. And this is because in each of certain counties, we can count up to two or three languages in one county. Diversity of languages. For example, if you go to Obubra, yes, Obubra is a very popular city in ICOM State today. In Obubra alone, we have two major languages. One is called Mbembe language and the other one is called Adon language. In Itigidi alone, we have up to three good languages there in that county. Okay, where we have, okay, our sisters who were formerly in Eboni State because of the nonsensical creation of the contraption that is called Nigeria. These are our sisters and brothers from Eboni State where, let me say by mistakenly count out of Eboni State to join the former Cross River State, who happy to find themselves today in ICOM State. There we have the Igbo language, purely Igbo language, purely, purely Igbo pronunciation within that location. And then we still have the Bahumono language and we have the Imabana language. And so going further, we have diversity of languages in ICOM, which also help us in the creation of our counties because we try to marry the culture and the languages of a particular people to determine that place as a county for proper and convenient governance of the location. We have diversity of cultures as well in ICOM. Where from Edjagam people, the Edjagam people of ICOM locality, at this place I mentioned now, is a stone true to Amazonian territory, where the river is coming from a particular mountain in that territory. So the Edjagam speaking people, in those days, we trek with our legs to cross to the Amazonian territory. It just, if you can shoot catapult in those days, with your catapult you can aim and kill a bear in the territory of Amazonia today. And that this closeness with the Amazonian territory have also helped us to give relief to the fleeing Amazonian population. Today, ICOM is harboring over 10,000 fleeing Amazonians from the genocidal war also going on in that territory between the Amazonian forces and the Cameroonian forces. And so we are today harboring over 10,000 Amazonian refugees. The fleeing Amazonians are having their support in ICOM State because of the closeness between us and them. So there is this diversity of languages, there is this diversity of culture. And as a people, we are agriculturists. The ICOM people are known for agriculture. We are good at the production of oil palm trees. We are good at the production of rubber trees. We are good at the production of cocoa. Many years ago, in this contraption called Nigeria, if you study the history of this business center, you discover that ICOM was a major producer of cocoa that fed this country. The Britain came down to ICOM to steal all our cocoa. They took it to their country and enriched their country. And today, ICOM is left unattended to despite our rich cocoa production. So we are good today at cocoa production. We are good at root tuba crops such as yams, such as cassava. We are good producers of gari today. And so ICOM is a state where nobody leave, whether indigenous or stranger, and complain of hungry because their food is enough, more than enough. ICOM, we have mineral resources such as precious stones. We have limestones. We have our timber. It is one of the battles still going on as I speak now. The contraption called Nigeria has over the years mounted a Chinese company in the city of ICOM. And this Chinese company over the years have been deforesting our forests. They've been cutting down our trees, which they are siphoning into their country as raw materials and they're giving this contraption peanuts in return of deforesting our land. And I can assure us now, by the virtue of what we are doing today, we are set to stop the Chinese company so that our barren lands, our thick forests will not go down in history. We are good at fish production. Like I have said earlier, we have enough river. One river and cycle itself within the state are giving us a boost for fish production. And so the people of ICOM are purely agriculturists. We are into the production of farm materials and farm crops. And that has earned us a living, even though this contraption called Nigeria neglected us. They abandon us. They are very good at taking our raw materials and our agricultural products to Abuja. Yet, they cannot give us a single road. So long as they load our agricultural product on their trucks and move them to Abuja, they leave, they abandon the road and abandon us. We don't have electricity, we don't have anything, no development. Keeping us there to struggle on ourselves. And so the ICOM people are also very, very good at warfare. I want to make it categorically clear here today that when the Fulani Janga weed are invading communities all over this contraption called Nigeria, ICOM remains the only state today that the Fulanis cannot invade. It has never happened. It has, there is no record anywhere in this contraption that the Fulanis invade ICOM. And this is made possible because the people of ICOM are traditional warriors. They are traditional fighters. This, as you can see from our cultural display, our people are born warriors. Our people are born fighters. ICOM State is a low-go area for Fulanis. At any point in time, they attempt it, they used to go home and give the testimony to their people. It is not just, it is not a joking matter because these people, ICOM are born fighters. It is a natural gift to ICOM people. So we do not give any little, any chance to Fulanis to come to our land and terrorize our farmers and terrorize our mothers. You know, it is not done. It is forbidden. And then finally, the ICOM people are very good at the production of palm wine. The production of palm wine. Our parents can climb, no matter the height of a palm tree, our parents know how to climb there and produce the palm wine from the up. And such, we are And such, we are also very good at drinking the palm wine. Yes, yes, it is our tradition. In Icom, we produce the palm wine, we drink it excessively. Yeah, we use it to entertain our neighbors. I think this is all I have to say for now uh regarding the Icom people culture, the Icom people language and our natural resources. I say thank you from here for all of us that are here present and here with me. Shalom from here, sir. We shall, yeah, Honorable Sir, I think uh the next item here is to present the traditional cola notes. Uh should I go ahead, sir?
Yes, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, go ahead.
And please, I'm very sorry to say that according to my culture, the presentation of this traditional cola notes cannot be done in this foreign language that I'm speaking. It must be done in my native language. So bear with me, even if you do not understand what I'm saying, I'm not cursing you. It is our tradition. Uh our tradition say the cola must be presented in my language. So I'm going ahead to present this traditional cola notes in my language. Thank you. Over so then. Even up already. Oh boy, I'm bored. Kikala Betty. Guess who I can look. I'm not a baby, I'm a kid, I'm a. You wait till you tell me the bulla who. Oh boy, I try out. Your black eye, you call it. Oh, but I said I'd leave you later. Car wash five. Who come in, delicate car. What our to be kept up. I pop on a F O Y O I, no, you can't. But I pop on a F O K, but I'm not okay cool. About my mom, yeah, okay, yeah. About my mom, yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah. Banana. You see. You see. You see. Alright. I just presented a traditional cola note in my language. Uh none of the ancestors have accepted our cola. I will then go forward to officially and universally break the cola notes myself. Our ancestors have given me the go-ahead to break the cola notes. Our ancestors say I should tell us that they are very happy with your presence. Our ancestors say they have accepted you wholeheartedly in this the land of Icom. And so I will break the cola notes with a sum of ten thousand Ajim. Shalom from here. Are you from a Prime Minister, sir?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. The cola note is broken and we welcome everyone to Icom. Please, the floor is open. Come and pick cola note. You have heard everything you needed to know about the rich cultural heritage of Icom State and everything therein. The floor is open, come and join in breaking and eating of the cola. Thank you. Uh Epa and Joku, your hand is up. Over to you.
Yes, special greeting to you, my honorable acting Prime Minister Masukin Kure. Special greeting to you, my honorable Minister of Information about um Sonia Parawa. And the wonderful means of Icom State Gosu Ufran. I don't know why I'm so happy tonight. Uh we know they are a wonderful country. And back then in my days in high school in Kalaba, I used to have a classmate whose name was Daniel Ufran. And he was actually from Yakor, which is part of Icom today. And I get to know a whole lot of things about the Icom people, the Yakor people and the different languages and your culture. And you took your time to explain everything this this evening. You took your time to try best explain the culture, the food, the languages. And I'm so impressed. I'm so impressed. I come here this evening as your boss in the eastern region. Uh for those who don't know, Gosu Ufran also double as the deputy head of the eastern region. And he has been the wonderful um deputy to me. So I'm so proud and very happy for his presentation and what he has taken Icom State to. And so far, so good. He has been the only one standing so strong for Icom despite all the sabotage and the destruction brought by Madame Baobao. And today we can see how wonderful and how strong this young man is. And his presentation can tell you all that he never swerving, he always standing on the path of truth. And even if he's the only one or two or three in Icom, you can see he has successfully hosted the town hall meeting for Icom. I can tell you all that I'm usually, I'm very proud of this young man. Gosu Ufran, thank you so much. So proud of you. And may God bless all the citizens of Icom who are standing on the path of truth. On this note, I would like to pick cola on behalf of a park border state and the and the eastern regions of our dear nation with a sum of ten thousand Ajim. Thank you so much. Over to you, my honorable Minister of Information.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Machenek. Thank you. Alright, the floor is open to everyone. Please support Icom and pick cola, pick cola, pick cola. Uh Biafra Admin, over to you. On meet yourself.
Hi there, my honorable. I support you.
Yeah, that one is not for us. The floor is open to everyone. Uh Kenneth Sukwa, over to you, Kenneth. On meet yourself.
Welcome to everybody in their house. We bring to our APM, we welcome you, sir. Good evening to the Minister of Information, Sonia Parawa. You are welcome in our midst. Uh I want to welcome our APM especially with some of uh five hundred Ajima. And also want to pick my cola note with some of uh five hundred Ajima. Thank you.
Thank you. That is five hundred Aj, right? Aj?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate. Um we are the choir mistresses and the choir masters. We need to sing to appreciate those that are making donations, please. Alright, we come to Honorable Meche. Over to you.
Yes, someday, everybody. Uh greetings to everyone. All protocols observed. Uh yes, I would like to pick cola uh with the sum of uh seventy-five thousand Ajim. They won.
They were, they were.
Do you, are you there?
I am partially here.
My, your voice is better than mine.
Okay, no problem, I'll try.
Thank you.
Thank you. We come to Honorable Happy Girl. Ezia Happy Girl, over to you.
They won, they come, they won, brick pan.
They were.
Nalun, thank you so much. I'm here on behalf of uh uh Ezia da um Mata Amuneki, she is supporting what uh Icom State is doing today with thirty Ajima. And uh she said we should continue. Uh today she got a very disturbing news from the homeland that her grandson of twenty-one years old was abducted by the kidnappers by the zoo zoo terrorists in police uniform on his way to school at Uturu Okigwe Azes. She is not feeling good. So she said I should communicate this across.
God will release him.
And yeah, she wants us to put her in prayers and uh the son, the grandson in question. Um she she wasn't fine at all today.
Alright, that's a sad news. And um send our words to her that we are with her. And I think we need the photo of that person that was kidnapped by the zoo terrorist army so that we can create awareness on the media for the media to see and know that um Nigerian terrorist army actually abducted this person. Also, let's also location. And we need them to relieve the person. If they have taken him to Obinsa Bara, wherever they have taken him to, because that is where they do organ harvesting. This is the reason why Biafra Liberation Army are going after all these terrorist gang groups, bringing them down because the kidnapper watch children every day, disappear them, and then we don't see them anymore. So please, send the information across. Should I say we crave the media awareness? Thank you so much. And send our uh words of encouragement to her to be strong that we are solidly behind her.
Okay, thank you. She said uh that they are even demanding cease media from the family. She will hear, she will get the message right away.
Alright. Can imagine zoo terrorist army in the Wawa land. Yeah, Honorable Betty, go ahead.
Oh, we are sorry for this sad news, oh. It's so hard to.
Very, very sad.
Don't know, don't. Don't, don't, don't.
Extend our greetings. We will all try to put them into prayer. God will do it for them and they will release him. Yeah, we become fusion in their camp.
Amen. Amen.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, my minister. I greet my wonderful APM. And my respect and love goes to IPM Masey Simon Epa. Obatobi, we love him. And to my supreme leader Mazenamdekanu, all the gallant men, our BDF in general, especially Butuzo and the general and other commanders. We love you people, we respect you, and we are praying for your success and long life. I am very, very happy today. In fact, I was taking some notes from what this our brother was saying. Is it uh God's will or fair? He is very wonderful. All the geographical location, the agricultural attributes of Icom people. I started hearing Icom as a child. My uncle walked there before the war and he came back shortly before the war. So Icom people, Biafra will definitely remember you people the way you wanted and give you everything that you well deserve. I thank you so much. We are happy that today Icom people, your voice is being heard. We, Biafrans, we must not relent. We have to keep moving on. Thank you, Mister God's Will. Keep the fire burning. We move. So I am from uh Ezan State. I will be taking uh the Usoggi with uh ten thousand Ajim. Thank you so much and keep the fire burning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Betty. Let's sing for her, please. Minister Komford, please reach out to your mic.
Hey you, thank you, Nam. Thank you.
Yeah, Minister Komford.
Thank you.
Welcome on board, ma. Hope you are doing well today.
Yeah, much, much better.
Honorable Komford, God bless you, mommy.
Love all, love all of you. Love all of you.
Thank you, thank you. No, no.
They were, Nam, Jenny. I love you.
Hi, I love you, Mama. Your face is still shining regardless.
No, 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 have it over my face. I don't want anybody to see. Oh my god. Oh my god, I know, I see that. Oh my god, you're chilly, you're so, you're so bad, see you.
Beautiful woman.
No, 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 no.
You're beautiful. We love you, Mama. Get better, huh?
Jenny, Jenny.
The Lord is your strength.
Ah, yes, 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 yes. It's Biafra, Biafra force, Biafra force, Biafra force.
Yes, uh Biafra force, we move.
Sunny, you see, you see, Sunny, I'm behind you.
Thank you, ma. Welcome back, welcome back.
No.
Alright, we have um Eke Chuku CV. Over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
They were.
Uh without wasting time, I'm supporting the caste with a sum of five thousand Ajim from Odumewo.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you, Mazi Kichuko. We come to Loziana. Loziana, on meet yourself.
Fuck is a fuck. How did they come in? Ah?
They can always come in better. They can't do anything. We have Mirama, Mirama, over to you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope to hear my good you, uh honorable. God will bless you. You see, can all who. My honorable Sunny. May the law continue to strengthen you. All our leaders and all our honorables, the same prayer goes to you all. More respectfully, our gallant men. It's not easy. Nigeria have been pumping all their arsenals. But what baffles me is how God is using these men to 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 fight these people, to understand that they don't know what else to do than to go buy our people off. Because destroyed, the hand of God is not to touch. I wonder why they should be buying people in order to using them to penetrate. I wonder why they should be buying people in order to using them to penetrate. Anyway, that is why they will, I know that our God is on our side. I wonder God will, okay, I really appreciate you. In fact, with all you list at, I start thinking of relocating to ICOM now. Because there is a lot of people enjoyed it. I don't know if anybody can argue with me.
Oh, yes.
It has been long, we are hearing about ICOM and they are the best people that will produce fish. Fish. ICOM, when you go there, people say that there is a lot of fish, sheep that side. So God really bless eastern region, Biafra. And that is why Nigeria want to die there. You can see how for all the, all the way to ICOM, Nigeria still mortgage our forests. Why we have, why we have Calabasai port, they need to open it. Wherever on there, we have Ukuta, they just shut everything down. In fact, we have really suffered in the hand of Nigeria. And I, and I know that at the end of the day, God with you. So I just want to support my, my ICOM people from my state, obviously. With ten thousand. Thank you. God bless you all. Good night.
Thank you. Dalu, Akancha, what they just said.
Thank you, Mirama, thank you. Maybe former, over to you, maybe former. Alonso admin.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Ndewo.
Yeah, my honorable APM. Good evening, sir, from homeland. Alonso State precisely. Um. My Minister of Information. Sonia Barawa, thank you so much. I appreciate. The great work that you are doing for Biafrans. All the ministers in the house. Uh, Brighi Cabinet. I welcome all of you to ICOM State town hall meeting. Thank you, or may God bless all of you. My honorable. Uh, Mazi. Ophem, thank you so much. For your effort in ICOM State. We are seeing you. Thank you so much. Continue doing that. It's only Biafra that will pay you and God Almighty. Will make sure. That the Biafra freedom that we are fighting. Must come to. Reality. On behalf of my state. Alonso State. I'm picking a cola with the sum of. Ten thousand AJ. Thank you, all of you. Ndewo.
Ndewo, Nam.
Ndewo. Dalu, Honorable Nebe, Koma.
Thank you.
That is.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, my very former. Now we come to Jenny Oyama. Over to you, man. Unmute yourself, man.
Good evening.
Evening.
Everyone, we welcome you to ICOM State. I welcome the APM, APM and his entourage to ICOM State. And we, the ICOM people, when you visit us, we have to actually do a very big celebration. To welcome everybody. So with that. We are presenting a hundred tubers of yam.
Wow.
And one native cow.
Wow.
For all, so with that, we are giving six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ.
Honorable.
They all gave me. Konaka, konaka.
Again.
Konaka.
Honorable Jenny, God bless you. Honorable Jenny, you know that any man. Honorable Jenny, I'm here, I know. Wow, thank you so much. That was.
That's great.
Dalu, thank you.
Hundred and six. Wait, let me, let me get the number again so that make I not do mistake. Uh huh. Let me get the number, well, make I not do mistake, go. Before I will get suspension for pronouncing it wrongly. Uh huh.
It is six hundred and thirty-three AJ, man. Six hundred and thirty-three, sir.
Six hundred and thirty-three AJ, AJ. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ. Please make a complete and well, six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ. And um we have a bigger special number for. Our Jenny Oyama.
Biafra is all he asks for. Every night and day, he's shouting and pointing to one direction. But his own people are blind and saying it's causing division. Tell me why, why, why? Someone who sacrificed his life for you and I. Tell me why, why, why? Out of sight has become matter of mind. He's asking for nothing and cares about not for his people emancipation. Ay, no, 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 no. Guys, there is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise.
I hope the music is coming out. Is the music coming out? Is the music coming out?
It was coming out a while ago, but now it stops.
Okay. Let's see now, is it coming out now? Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our mama Jenny Oyama. From ICOM State. Thank you, thank you for that presentation of the. And everything and the AJ that accompanies everything all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, mama, come, I mean Jenny, God bless you.
Thank you so much. Freedom for Biafra, over to you, Johannes Hope.
Yes, good evening, Biafrans.
Good evening.
Yeah, uh, from my end here, I will welcome APM and. And his entourage with twenty AJ.
All right. Thank you.
I will send a receipt to Sunny this week.
All right. Thank you so much, Freedom. God bless you.
Yeah. And you all.
Go ahead. You don't?
I said, and you all also.
Okay, thank you, Nam. God bless you.
Yes, you are doing a good job and we are part of you all.
Yeah, God bless you.
Ndewo.
All right.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru, Freedom Banyo. Hey you, they did, they did, Akancha, oh.
Thank you, thank you, Freedom. For Biafra, thank you. All right, we are still picking cola. The cola is still on the table. Come and pick cola. Come and pick cola, there is cola. That has been served. Come and pick cola. This one is not for us. This one needs to be sent to the trash bin. Over Biafra one. Not for us. Floor is open for cola picking. Come and take cola. You came to this. When you get back, you have to know you got something from the town hall meeting. Come and pick cola, please.
Okay, uh, can I, can I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, uh, greetings to our people ICOM. Thank you for hosting us today. Uh, we highly appreciate. This opportunity that we have come to. To together to get as a family. And it's very interesting to listen to your cultural um heritage and. Your cultural geographic areas and everything that has to do with the people of ICOM. Thank you so much to the admin, Mazi Godspower. So I really appreciate that detailed um information being given to us and I pray that by the grace of Chukwukika Biama. Biafra will come and every indigenous of ICOM and beyond. Will live to inherit and enjoy the natural heritage. Of our forefathers, of our land, of our culture and everything that we represent. So thank you for that presentation. I wanna support real quick the cola not breaking. And because I'm a female, I'm going to go ahead and pick my own um Usogi. Yeah, with fifteen thousand AJ. Once again, thank you and thank God, thank you, great Biafrans for being here. God bless you all. We move. APM, welcome you. Thank you so much. Honorable Sunny, you're doing great. Thank you, everyone. Am I being heard? Am I being heard? Am I being heard?
Yes.
All right.
I'm gonna lower my hand.
Thank you, Honorable uh, Chinny. Please, let's sing for Honorable Chinny. We appreciate your donation. Let's sing for her, please.
Ndewo. Thank you so much, Honorable Betty.
Thank you.
Ndewo.
Thank you, Honorable Betty. Thank you, Honorable Chinny. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Ndewo.
Which one is Biafra Freedom Number One again? I thought Biafra Freedom Number One has spoken. Biafra Freedom Number One. Go ahead, unmute yourself. Uh, Kashan, Kashan is not for us. All right, um, we need more hands up as we continue to pick cola. Kashan is not for us. Uh, Biafra Freedom Number One is not for us. These are the enemies of Biaji coming to attack us. We are sending them out. So pick cola, pick cola, pick cola, the floor is open. All right, the voice, the voice, go ahead, the voice.
Yeah. A perfect evening from here to you all, presence, all the honorable in the house. I greet you especially the Minister of Information for your good work. It don't miss something in the coming. Yes, I also join the people of ICOM. The administrator of ICOM is also the deputy head of Eastern Region. I welcome APM to ICOM State with the sum of one thousand AJ. And um also want to confirm to what um the administrator said. And his welcome address. And um I want to say ICOM is not just a name. It's a sister territory. It's a sister territory. So for this reason. I also plead and um. Ask Biafrans to look inward. And do the needful when time come, because I believe the time is very close. Thank you very much. The Voice, Abagoda State, media head.
Akamarama Kai Gakuru, The Voice Banyo. Thank you, honorable The Voice. God bless you. Akancha. Okay.
Thank you, The Voice. Thank you, The Voice, for your donations. We really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. All right, we need more hands. Alright, we need more hands, come and pick cola, come and pick cola, come and pick cola. Okay, uh Honorable Yunis Uchachi, your hand is up, over to you.
Fuck Israel, fuck you, you little bitch, motherfucker.
So some of you even came in with Yunis' name, okay. We take you out.
Shall never be well with them, all these evil people. God will punish all of you all. Evil people, may evil befall all of you and your generation.
Alright. This one is the second one that came in with the one that came in with C O S name, C O S, are you there?
I don't think C O S is there.
Well, let's confirm what is raising, uh Mazya Mobbi, your hand is up. Unmute yourself.
Betty is rubbish singer.
We talk and say, no, 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 Miss Grant be that. Alright, the floor is open for everyone to pick cola. And um support um ICOM Town Hall Meeting. Let's take some renditions before we continue while we wait for A P M to prepare for the next item on the program. Okay, we see Osogie. Osogie unmute yourself, over to you.
Good evening to everyone.
There were.
Good evening to our item Prime Minister and to our internal leader and to our and to M A K. Thank you for everyone that have been donating. I think I have not been active for the past three weeks now due to uncertainty of things. In this um to and will be supporting ICOM State with two thousand A J tonight. And I also want to make it clear to every Biafrans that I be sitting on the fence that they are worse, they are betrayer. They are worse than the full planists. Because Mazzi Nkandu have been broadcasting and our people said declared Biafran, he said the time is not now. And we have given the mandate for Biafran to be a defense. If anyone is sitting on the fence, the person is a betrayer. And for those people that are becoming into this fundraising with fake identity, I pray that many Nigeria happen to every of their household, they will never know peace. But then to come and be making harm of us in this fundraising.
Be safe.
They will never know peace. Those, those people are full honest. Anybody that is fighting against the situation of Biafa that the full need naturally does not like anything good. That is why they will go to farm and destroy farmlands. Anybody attacking our people are worse than full honest. They are full need blood working in them. Because it is only
This meeting is being recorded.
It is only the full honest that is against progress. It's only the flannin who will come into your community and destroy things that is working. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Mazuzochi, Akamarama Kaiakuru Mazuzochibanyo. Akanchawa Ndewo.
Unmute yourself Mazzi.
To be one of them.
Mazzi unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Uh I think the phone.
I remove him. Evil people. Remove the idiot.
Biafra is all he asks for. Every night and day he shouting and pointing to one direction. But his own people not blind and saying he's causing division. Tell me why, why, why someone who sacrificed his life for you and I? Tell me why, why, why out of sight has become out of our mind? He's asking for nothing and cares about not for his people emancipation. Ay, na, 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 na. Guys, there is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. You hate him because of envy. We love him, he's one and only. We follow him because he's ready to die for the freedom of his people. Whatever he said is a prophecy. Take it or you leave it later, you believe. He's so fanatical and never ready to die for the freedom of his people. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. Freedom of the canon now. Freedom of the canon now. Freedom of the canon now. Freedom of the canon now.
Yes, at this point, we welcome our Honorable A P M. The talking now do A P M of the Biafran people. The only A P M that will give you Koboko, Koboko, when you come to destroy the Biafran cause.
Honorable Sunny, please just a hand up, okay?
No, forget about that hand, that is one of those enemies that are coming to attack us, they are not for us. So we salute everyone and join me in welcoming the Honorable A P M of the Biafran people, His Excellency Honorable Tukomkar. Ndewo A P M and welcome.
A P M, no, thank you.
Ndewo. Thank you, thank you, thank you Honorable Minister of Information. Thanks for all you're doing. Our Biafrans, I appreciate you, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Ndewo, our Honorable Betty. The real one, you know you have the, the real one and the fake one.
Thank you sir.
People that are coming even with Biafran name is expected because uh the fullness they will not be able to operate the way this saboters that are here to disrupt what we are doing. They will not be able to operate the way they are operating now. You can see they come with Biafran name. Some of them are from this uh fail uh coup plotters. They already know the name of our C O S, they wanna come with the name of our C O S. They already know the name of some of the honorable members that are not here. That's what they want to come with. But we just wanna let them know that no matter what they do, it doesn't matter what they throw upon us. We prevail, we fight a good fight. Because we are fighting for our freedom. I hope I'm coming out loud and clear, Honorable.
Yes, A P M, we can hear you, go ahead sir.
We are fighting for our freedom. And all these evil people as I'm speaking now, Biafran land, we don't have a police station of our own. Because we have not totally liberated our land and start to function as in a more government. We don't have where we will select, arrest them, prosecute them. Or you know, uh let the law uh take its full course. Since we don't have that now, we'll go with what we know that is effective in our land. What we know that we are blessed of. All these evil people, the word we utter out is our bond for now. It will never be well for them. No peace for the wicked. If you're one of the wicked one that have come here today to disrupt this program, it will never be well with you. I came across before I actually proceed. Let me use the opportunity to remember those before us. Our leader Ojuku and our leader Philip Ephion. We appreciate them. They paved the way for us. They open our eyes. They educate us the need for us to fight for our freedom. We also wanna appreciate our leader Mazzi Namdika. Uh this week, we send a strong message to the Nigerian terrorist zoo country. Not to let anything happen. Give me one second, let me correct something here, please, one second. We send a strong message. Not to let anything happen to our leader Mazzi Namdika. Nigerian terrorist country, they kidnap our leader from Cayman not because he commit crime. Just because he's fighting for Biafran people. Just because he's asking for freedom. And our leader, our Prime Minister Mazzi Simon, he was called for so-called question. In few weeks' time, we expect his release because he do nothing wrong. We appreciate both leaders. And we appreciate the Brigade Cabinet, Reb, Admin, Coordinators. We appreciate all of you. We also appreciate the de facto government and in the homeland and I believe ICOM State today is the first town hall meeting, congratulations. We appreciate the administration there. Keep doing what you are doing. Uh from the admin, I heard Enya on his remark about the way, what we need to do to this make message to ICOM people. We'll try the best we can. We'll try the best we can. That is why we always encourage every Biafra to come in mass, support your freedom financially. Go with finance, we can be able to do a lot. All this costs money, EJMA, EJ. Please, the admin from ACOM, please mobilize the citizens of ACOM. Make sure, you know, they turn up when we have fundraising, even from your local state. Make sure, please, that they support our freedom because we need money. Now more than before. We have a lot to do with EJMA. We have a lot to do. To make sure that the message go all across Biafran land, it require money. We can do it with our bare hand. So we try the best that we can. Why the de facto government, especially from East State, or the admin, please work very hard so that we can make this happen. So we appreciate you all for what you are doing. And let's move to what is happening in Biafran land. Biafran land is under siege by the terrorist country called Nigeria. And we are fighting, we are doing everything we can to push back, to pull them out of our land. It require everyone's support. Sabotage will not help. Those that are coming with Biafran name to disrupt our program today will not help. Rather, those that are sabotaging what we are doing, they will all perish by the weapon that we have as of today. If we can't lay our hand on them, when we cross them, we use the mouth that God have given us and with what it can do, lay a serious curse on all these evil people. Them and their entire family will perish. To never be well with them. Because that's only how we can defeat them for now. If we are ready, control our territory hundred percent and have our total sovereignty, we have everything that we, we can use to render that justice of democracy. But as it stand now, we don't have that in place yet. So that's why we use the weapon of making sure that when they start going through the calamity that will be for them, they will use their tongues to count their teeth, to find out where do this go wrong? What happened? I came across a video, let me just play this voice here. I'm not trying to to validate this person, but people have to be careful. Minister of Information, what I'm going to do is that I will forward it to you. So I think if you play it from your end, it will be clearer, please. Please, we are warning Biafrans. Stop. We are warning Biafrans, those that are align against us because they have used this to poison the mind of Biafrans. This, all these audios, these lies, you know, a lot of Biafrans are listening to it and they are buying the idea thinking it's true. So these people, it will never be well with them. So we always want to let them know that whatever they are doing, there is consequences. Honorable Minister of Information, I just forward you this audio, please, can you? Can you play this audio, please? Okay, why, why you get it ready? These evil sabos that have come to destroy Biafran people, they have used lies, propaganda, carata assassination to destroy and poisoning a lot of Biafrans. And we still repeat it. It will not be well with these people that are practicing evil against this great cause. We have been attacked in different ways, but by the grace of our creator, who know that our hands are clean. He's helping us out in our fight. But we will also fund our freedom and do the best we can. Please, honorable Minister of Information, are you, are you able to play this audio from your end, please?
Yeah, I'm downloading it, I'm downloading it. Ready to finish download.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I also want to use this opportunity to let Biafrans know that whole poso de man, these evil man have signed to allow a group called Agune Chamber, terrorist group that is working within Nigerian terrorist states. Who have signed and approved the deployment of Agune Chamber to come to Biafran land, Biafra villages, socials, we have ECK here. We have ECK and also Ebony Season with affective from Monday being tomorrow. So who are them? The illegitimate governor that is working within Nigerian terrorist state. They are doing everything they can to bring our BDF down. They are doing everything they can to see if we can stop fighting for our freedom. My fellow citizens, I just want to let you know. Don't give up. Keep fighting. Keep funding your freedom and ask for hope. Very soon. Okay, I got what tag. Very soon. Very soon. Very soon. There is no place for the wicked. All of them that have come and colluded to destroy Biafran people, to take our freedom from us, it will never be well. I played with every citizens of Biafra. Please come on board. Fund your freedom. Your freedom will not be given to you. Your freedom is in your hand. If you think it won't raise you, you are just joking. Every day, every day, we campaign about our freedom. We emphasize, we stress the need for us to be free, the need for us to fund our freedom. Some think we are joking. Biafra is here and I keep saying it. We are very close. If you're still wondering, asking, when will this Biafra come? Biafra is here. We all see what is happening in our land today. Years ago, it's not like that. Everything the Nigerian terrorist state is doing, they are wrapping up, trying to see, is there any kind of magic? What will they do to kill us all today? What will they do to chase us out of our land? What will they do to Islamize us? And some of you Biafrans are there doing your buying and selling, living in your comfort zone. While we have thousands of Biafrans that have been killed, murdered, some have been beheaded. And you have this illegitimate governors burning the house of Biafrans, destroying their properties. I believe it's high time we say enough is enough. And this time we fight and fight like never before. Now that hope have signed and approve this terrorist armed group. Because hope still have everything it take. He still work within Nigerian terrorist state. And he is illegitimate governor parade himself in Biafran land. He still have what it takes to fight Biafran people. Are we going to allow hope? And some of you in Allah are on this logo, all these villages, you are seeing what is happening. Some have family in Dasbro in abroad. Some have family that they are well to do. Why can't you put a call across to your family members? Ask them to support. Tell what is happening in Biafran land. Our people are smart. Our people are intelligent. And our people are also very, very stubborn. Is it until they kill us all? Some of us are doing our best. Today, before this Star Hall meeting, I have three meetings already. After this Star Hall meeting, I have two meeting before the end of the day. All about Biafra. Talking about Biafra, way forward. Why some are levitating, eating this year, we are no hobby. Why their house is on fire? What a shame for those that I don't want to support. World Evo Congress, the chairman called me about two months ago. Running mouth about what he want to do. He want to go to Finland. He want to do this, he want to do that. I ask him questions. How is he supporting? How is he contributing? That money he want to use to catapult himself to Finland? Why can't he put the money in our logistics? So we can chase the enemy out. Our leader Mazin Namdekan have had meeting with this group. They did not deliver. They did not bring it down. Even our Prime Minister, they did not deliver, nothing. They don't have Biafra at heart. Is it the American so-called veteran? They don't have Biafra at heart as well. But every time our leader Mazin Namdekan have a cut this, they will run down there to parade themselves like if they love Biafra. Like if they love the people of Biafra. They don't. If they do, why are they not condemning the killing in the Hiamu? If World Evo Congress love the people of Biafra, why are they not condemning what is happening in Biafran land? Why are they not condemning the Nigerian terrorist state? Everything they are doing is just for their own political gain. They want to run to Abuja to snap picture with our leader Mazin Namdekan. To use it for campaign. To use it to be relevant among Biafran people. The Evo or Biafran American veteran, they will catapult themselves all the way from United States of America to Biafran land. But they cannot condemn the atrocity that the Nigerian terrorist state have committed against Biafran people. They want to act, pretend like they care for the Biafran people. Why they don't? Is it your hands and the Evo? They will run to Abuja to see a beloved feeling like some bamboo that just getting their banana. Deceive the people of Biafra. To make themselves relevant just for their own political gain. This chairman of the World Evo Congress for over two months. Now I hope he's listening to me because he's a big fool. After he asked me to send him some information till now, he never responded, idiot. He make a walk. This how they deceive our leader Mazin Namdekan. This how they deceive our Prime Minister. They will do this, they will do that. They never done, do nothing! Evil people, fake people. Spooks everywhere. All these evil saboteurs. Their generation will suffer it unless they repent. Every enemy of Biafra. Since we can't lay our hand on you now, the cause we utter, we follow you. No place for the wicked. Our land is burning. Biafran land is bleeding. Evil people that have colluded with Nigerian terrorist state, they will bring our tanks to kill our people, Biafra. While you have some Biafrans, they don't even care. They think it's okay. It is not okay! Honorable Minister of Information, are you able to load this voice I sent to you yet? It's not coming louder, I don't know if it is from.
Wait, let me. Oh, that is the highest of the volume. That's the highest of the volume.
Can, from this room, can you hear, is this voice coming clear?
Honorable Juna, can you hear the voice?
No, no, it's so fainting.
Okay, wait, let me refresh, refresh.
Honorable Sonny, please block the chat.
I've blocked already, let me refresh.
Alright, thank you.
While Honorable Sonny is doing what he's doing, all these evil people that in the chat section, some of them.
Can I try now, APM, let me see. Is it better now?
Actually, still the same.
APM, if you have the one that is just audio, this one is the one that. APM, if you have the one that is just audio, this one is the one that has been turned to video. And the volume is like this.
Alright, but if you go to the, if you go to uh Biafra Watchman, I think uh you can play it from there.
Okay, let me see.
Yeah, yeah, I think uh starting from after like a few minutes of the video.
Uh, Biafra Watchman TV.
Alright, while you're searching. All of you evil ones in the comment section, keep commenting evil, keep shouting about evil about us. Whatever you are doing, you think you can bring us down. But I promise you, the Biafran people promise you, it will never be well with you and your generation. Because some of you are the ones that put us in this mess. This is not a political correctness government. Our land is bleeding. The Nigerian terrorists have come. They are killing our people every day. And all you evil sabos are here to distract us. That is how you will distract your entire, entire generation.
You say.
That is how your life will be cut short.
You say.
Evil people, we have no rest.
How come?
Yeah, ZPM, let me try here from the YouTube of uh the government, I saw CDL.
Yeah, it's better.
I saw CDL, it's a confusion everywhere. Because you know, the handwork of for Nigerian government and the hope was of them. So my brother, yeah, I can deny me, yeah, I can deny me. But it's quite unfortunate in the use of Ebo against Ebo. I will go carnation.
Post right there. Mazisani post. This man, whoever it is, I hope you are washing. You, your entire generation will suffer on eternity.
How come?
These are people that are destroying the mind of Biafra. Instead of get Kere and his brother, I don't have any of my brother that is a politician. I don't even know any of the illegitimate governors. Never spoken with any governor, left owner, or deputy or whatever. These are the people that they will send audio deceiving Biafrans both home and abroad. It break my heart. The same idiot here talking about, I hope, who's the man? Is bringing military to kill Biafrans. He cannot sympathize. But the same idiot here lying against an innocent person. I have heard this voice before. Think, yes, audio I came across was at the time. This audio here, this man, whoever know him or if anyone can cut this post, this place, send it to him. Let me use uh the Ebo dialect to let him know that. Me chari from him name me. My give me, you know, logi, we no got one week. Ona come the Ocha Mama Mama any governor. Is he no logi? Oh, God, you know.
He saying.
So this evil man here unto the rest of the evil saboteurs. All of you that are lying against the genuine fighters, those fighting to restore to uh those fighting for the total liberation of Biafra and for Biafra to be recognized. All of you sabos, it will never be well. When we talk about why so many Biafrans are not responding, this audio is misleading. This evil man don't even know who I am. We haven't have any business dealing. He don't know me as a person. He don't know who he's talking about. But he's right here lying against me. And why some thousands of Biafra probably gonna come across this audio and they will believe him. When I listened to this yesterday, really break my heart. I say, why are people like this? Why are evil people everywhere? Every day, day and night. We are thinking about how we can totally be free from this shackled bondage we find ourselves. While you have some that pretend they love Biafra. That pretend they speaking for Biafra. They will be lying against the genuine Biafrans. Shame unto them, war unto them. Biafra is here. Since last week, I keep saying from next month, things are going to happen. From next month, a lot will happen. And for those that think they can break us, they cannot break this spirit. It can do whatever they can. They cannot bring us down. We must be free. And if you are Biafra listening to me, if you have never support before, kindly support your freedom. Kindly do everything within your reach to support your freedom. Ignore all these evil people. Ignore all these saboteurs that have been planted to destroy this great custom. Just like today. Some are coming with Biafra name. And some of them are Biafrans. And some are full of need that they gave birth to in our land to infiltrate us. The question is that, are we going to let them win this fight? Are we going to retreat? Are we going to leave our land to who? Are we going to surrender? This time around? As I keep saying, the evil ones, since we can lay our hand on you for now, we don't have any police station or any court of appeal where we tender your case. Whatever weapon we have, we will use that against you. Those that are destroying this movement, lying against us, it will never be well. Only care, goodness no law. You and your entire family, we perish. We suffer. These things that all of you are putting us through, will never be well. Please uh you know, uh it's just a lot going on. We are in the night hour and with what is happening, when I wake up every day, it kind of give me joy knowing that Biafra is here. If what is happening is not happening, that means we are not doing it right. Christopher Musa just disappear and appear this week again. He appeared this week because he see that the Nigerian terrorists is not winning the war. Christopher Musa found out that America have finally stepped up to sanction Nigeria. Christopher Musa of the Nigerian terrorist C D, Chief of Staff, uh uh C D S, find out that Canadians have designated the Nigerian state as a terrorist country. While you talk about APC or PDP, whatever their political wing is, if you call them terrorists, you call the country terrorists. Because APC, they are the ruling party. So if then we call APC a terrorist organization, who is the head of that terrorist? Tunubu, who is, who is the president of Nigeria? So Nigeria is a terrorist country, my fellow Biafrans. The vice president of Nigeria is who? Chetima. Chetima is a co-founder of Bukuharam. Please, because of time and I know in homeland now in Biafra land is uh midnight already, actually it's past midnight, I will be wrapping up. Please, my fellow citizens, anyone that is protesting evil or trying to destroy this great movement, disease from it, it don't give us, we don't, I don't feel, I don't have joy when I lay a cause, a weapon that I have for now on the evil doers, because I know it will happen. So we encourage all of you to repent, yeah, honorable uh Maz.
Yeah, please check your uh WhatsApp message, thank you sir, as you continue.
Please, we encourage all of you to repent from your evil way so that salvation will be your portion, please. We don't want to see all of you perish. If whether are you evil people, we perish. You are will perish you. I swear to God. If this fighting for Biafra is the last fight of fight in this planet earth, so be it. If I can lay my hand on whatever that I can use to burn, burn Nigeria down today, I would do it. Cut this video, send it anywhere. If I can, because I hate Nigeria with passion. Nigeria have killed too many of my people, they have killed a million. If we don't burn Nigeria down, if we don't stop Nigeria, they will kill us all. My people, they will kill us. What is wrong with us? It's high time we burn Nigeria down. Say shit, oh please. What have Nigeria done for you? Did Nigeria give you steady electricity? Good road, good hospital, good education? No! It's all pain, sorrow, agony, poverty. They will make you irrelevant in this global community. Why Biafrans, you have a lot of scientists from there, hardworking, doctors, lawyers, people of all walks of life. But the Nigerian terrorist state try to bring you down to nothing. If you keep, if you still keep up with Nigeria, the world will not even remember you. Rather, we will all perish. Please uh fellow citizens, it's high time we grab our freedom. Whatever that will prevent us to our promised land, any obstacle, both internal and external, external enemy. Destroy whatever come your way. Grab your freedom. Freedom is not given, it's taken. If it is a Biafra, it's a stumbling block. Take that Biafra out of the way. If it is from your household, your family, kick that whoever it is out of the way. If not, that person will kick you out. Choose one. Do you rather live in your own home or you rather choose to live in IDP camp? Choose one. Do you rather live as a freeborn or a slave? Choose one. Is it, will it be better for you to worship your true god, Jehovah, Jehovah, Elohim, or to worship a terrorist god? Blood-sucking terrorist god that all that god wants is blood, innocent people's blood. Is that the god you choose? The ball is in our court. We better choose whose god we worship, whose god we want to be with. As far I and my household and the entire Biafra, I believe we want to be with the god that is not a blood-sucking demons. We want to be with the real god, Jehovah God. We don't want that blood god that is so testy that want the blood of the innocent people. We don't want to worship that god that encourages people to go and rape women, rape cattle, rape everything, cow, whatever rape come their way. We don't want to worship such god. I have a lot to say, but I'm just trying to wrap it up. But it break my heart when I see some that call themselves Biafrans, not doing what is right. Like that gentleman that will play the audio. Is no logi, your household would perish with your evil. No place for the evil ones. It's not my word, it's the word of God. No place for the wicked. And for all you that have plotted coup about us before, coup one and coup two, that are still disrupting. You are evil, we catch up upon you. How wish, we already fully liberated Biafra land. Who starts speaking political correctness, but right now uh how many prime minister on earth that don't have their own private jet? I don't have mine. How many that don't have adequate security? I don't have mine. So we haven't fully get what we want as uh we are not operating as a normal government or a normal country now. So we say it with the way it is, we be more bruscher to get our freedom because that's only how we can get out of this. If we keep being political correct, correctness, we are correct. We want to speak, act like Trump, uh Benjamin Netanyahu and other world leaders that you know that they already have everything in place, the way should be. Please uh we have some good news, we are making progress no matter what. First of all, we want to congratulate our brother, our honorable Chairman. Starting from today, Honorable Chairman is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. And we will be uh will be communicating with Biafrans. Very soon, we will post the appointment later so everyone can have a copy and go through it. Honorable Chairman, I don't know if you're here, but if you're not, I believe you will come across this, I think uh you're already aware of it, so uh we are making it official that for your appointment. Thank you, Honorable Chairman, from now is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. And we know who the Minister of Foreign Affairs is before, is Bryson Ekoma or whatever, he's a saboteur, he's sold out. So he need to get out of the way. And we already actually spare him, so we just want to make it official now that Honorable Chairman is now the that Honorable Chima is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. Thank you, Anakwakiba, thank you very much. And we have uh, okay, our honorable Keowu. It's a German rep.
Yes.
Okay, Owo, Honorable Keowu is German rep. And we have Madame Nkiru.
Yes.
And Honorable Wachupu, UK reps.
Yes, congratulations.
We have uh, we know one of our most educated one that is in Europe, uh Honorable Uweboko. We know him as academic highness.
Yes.
The one that speak the, the grammar that a lot of people finally had to interpret. Hopefully, it's not going to make it too difficult for all of us. So here's the EU rep. So we know the former EU rep is a spell as well, uh, albeit she's not fruitful, so we need those that are genuine and fruitful.
In Nigeria.
Honorable Uweboko, his academic highness is now the European rep.
Yes, congratulations.
And he, he is also the one uh, you know, the Italian rep as well, so I know this is going to be a lot of work for him. And we are here to support you, the people of Italy are there to support you as well. Please, we encourage you to do your best and for just few weeks that you have made Italian rep, there's a positive change from before. Thank you, Honorable Uweboko. And we also have a honorable Nenaya Okiroke, Deputy Italian Rep. Thank you all for your new appointment. And uh we wa, we wish to work with all of you, honesty and truth. Please, because of time, we are running out of time already. Thank everyone, please all the sabotwa disease from your evil. Because the long run, to not beware. Even from the short run, you think we are joking. Uh, we are not joking, just in a little time, things will be unfolding, a lot will happen. And I keep saying September. Please put our, both our two leader, Mazin Namdekanu in your prayer. Our Prime Minister Mazdis Simon Eba, please remember him in your prayer. Next month, we expect positive results from Finland. A lot will happen next month. And in Washington DC, it's going down there. Please pardon my voice, because I've been in a meeting from meeting to meeting today, and I still have two to go. So it's what I'm doing for my country, uh, Biafra, I love you all. This fight sometime is getting more interesting, when you see all these sabotwa attacking, that mean what we are doing is very effective. But it breaks my heart that a lot of Biafrans don't realize the mess, what is going on in Biafra land today, that they need to come and support our freedom. If you go on Twitter S, YouTube, you see images coming from Biafra land, how the Nigerian terrorists have deployed armored tanks all over Biafra village from Miamufu to Okiwé, although are on this dog. All those tanks are not there to celebrate anything or to protect you or to give you security. These tanks that the Nigerian terrorists have deployed is to kill our people, your people, to kill innocent Biafra. Please, we need to fund our freedom. We need to chase these people out of our land. They can take their tank to Abuja. They can take their tank to Sokoto, Somalia, we don't need all those tank in Biafra land. And for all the gutter fake news, it won't be well with them. BBC Bullastan was reporting just to say all kind of manner evil against our BDF. But when they deploy all these tanks to kill Biafra, this useless BBC, don't even report it. BBC of court of injustice, it won't be well with them. Is this CNN? CNN is everywhere. But I don't see, I don't know any reason why they are not reporting what is happening in Biafra land. All the tank that have been, that the Nigerian state have deployed to Biafra land, CNN don't report it. BBC don't report it. Their fake gutter media caller arise and channel, they don't report it. What does that tell you? You on your own. That means if we don't protect our land, we all gone. We need to protect our land. Fund your freedom, don't be discouraged. Thank you all from here, and the admiral of Ekon, we appreciate and appreciate this invitation to be with you at the town hall meeting. Uh, mayor, the entire Briggy cabinet. And please for all the newly appointed ministers, please, we expect the best, because now we are separating the wheat from the wheat. So those that have been setting us back, they are not leaving us, so we are being more formidable now. And we moving in the right direction. Please, if you know anybody from Biafra land, put a call across, educate them, the reason why they need to fund their freedom, what they need to do, and they need to take all measures precaution and not to even try to validate any election in Biafra land, because there will be no election in Biafra land. There will be no election in Biafra land. And please, let me just actually read this letter. This is addressed to the President General Mbo, uh, Mbozi, the President General Azee, the President General Osuomohu, the President General Lulu, the President General Ubo Louis Suzo, the President General Isek. And on this letter I said, deployment of additional Agune Chamber, ARO, ARO S. In view of the numerous voice note and credible intelligence report regarding recent attack on innocent ci, uh, citizens within your domain, particularly in EC, ECAK and Lulu. I am, uh, this, uh, this is the useless, illegitimate governor of the Nigerian terrorists that have colluded with the Nigerian state. That is pleased to inform that uh, that the governor has now approved the deployment of additional Agune Chamber. Agune Chamber to do what? These are the same people that have been killing the innocent civilians in Biafra land. So my fellow Biafrans, if we don't rise up, fight, defend our land, we are in a big mess. Please, if you in your homeland, support your freedom like never before. Then if you can fight in your own way, if you can do aga wutu wutu in your own way, it's encouraged. Just be careful and take precaution in whatever you do. But if you can't, we have the BDF. Support your BDF, let them do the work. Then all these evil people, please, anyone, anyone that know how, if you know how to bar hacker, if you know how to do hackaloo no, in your own way, kindly do it, kindly, because these are the evil that have colluded. I wish I can do this by myself, and I have everything it takes, it will take me one night, all of them will be gone by, I will wipe all of them out. It's a promise, it's a fact, but we need support to be able to take care of these fools that have colluded with Nigerian terrorist state to come and kill us. They need to go by the playbook of these jihadist terrorist monsters. What they have done in several places. Look at what happened in Iran, what ha, what they did to people of Iran. The indigenous of Iran today, they are fighting for their own survival. They are trying to get their government back and live a normal life. Look at what they have done in Syria. Even till today, Syria is still in chaos. Look at what they have done in Lebanon. Lebanon is still in chaos. Is it, am I talking about Gaza? People don't know that the main root and problem of the Gazian people today are the Hamas, the terrorist wing, that wherever they planted their seed, wherever they are, they cause problem. Am I talking about Yemen? We can allow that in Biafra land, please, fight for your freedom, please, we don't want their food break. Thank you from here.
Thank you, our APM.
Honorable Sonic, can we sing for APM?
Yes, go ahead.
APM, Ogenkere. APM, Honorable Ogenkere. Ewo, Mponkenami, Uferesiwara Fio. Thank you, oh, ewo. Mponkenami, Uferesiwara Fio. Thank you, oh, God bless you, Honorable Ogenkere. May the Lord strengthen you with his grace and more wisdom. In the name of Chukwaki Kabiyama, he say.
He said, he said, you thank you our APM for that thunderous speech. Uh, we come to honorable mighty dot, mighty dot SC admin, over to you sir.
Yes, I go, me come on.
Me come, welcome on board.
Thank you. I'm greetings, Your Excellency, I'm the acting Prime Minister. Greetings, the COS. Um, greetings, all Biafrans here, the admins and the reps. Greetings, the US Assistant Rep. I'm in North and South America, Sister Chi, greetings everybody here.
Wow, there were.
Yes. Me come to the people of Oran, Ekondo, I mean, the people of Ekon. So there is um, Ekon, hmm. I, Ekon is a very special place. That was the reason why I actually show my face, I decided to join this thing. Ekon is a very special place, when I heard that Ekon is having a town hall meeting, I was like, wow. That place, Ekon played a very big part. I'm talking about our progenitors, our ancestors. Ekon is a very special land. The forest of Ekon, that is where, that was the library of the ancient people. Our ancient people, that's where the library was located. Artifacts, I'm talking about artifact that embodied the astronomic signatures. Was stored in Ekon, all those things was packed and removed. Stones that have strange writings, the insidies and everything was in Ekon. That is where, that is one of the places that shaped our civilization. Ekon, very powerful place. Our brother was talking about the Chinese, it's not because, it's not just the natural resources, that's not why they are there. There is something more deeper, something more spiritual that those people are harvesting from that Ekon forest. That forest in Ekon is who is a very special place. You talk about Fulani not being able to penetrate there. Yes, Ekon, they are warriors, but there is something more spiritual that stops them from entering the forest of Ekon. But when Biafra is restored, when Biafra is restored, the history of Ekon will be restored. So today I'm going to take Colorado to twenty thousand AJ and fifty thousand AJ, making it seventy thousand. My APM, these people are among of, of your school of thos. These people, there will never be forgiveness. Myiji and Okike will keep me alive when Biafra is restored. Because there is no man or woman on this planet earth that is of Biafra extract that will say that he or she hasn't heard of Biafra. He or she hasn't heard of what is happening to our people. He or she hasn't heard the massacre, the slaughtering, the struggle for our survivor. So he still will remember them. And there can never be any excuse for any one of them. They will all pay, both the traitors and those that turned their back on us when we mostly needed them. We are going to win this war. Whether they like it or not. If they refuse to support, our ancestors will raise stones that will support strangers that will support this, this fight. We are not going back. Thank you, my people, thank you, the people of Ekon.
Thank you. Honorable.
They don't know how how heartbreaking we are. When I keep telling you that, all these sabotwa, all these evil people, if I'm driving there in front of Ngari him, I will crush them. Because uh, I don't see any reason why afterwards happening in Biafra land. You look at your people being massacred every day. They burn your people houses, behave some, cut some hands off, destroy Biafra farms, rape our sisters, mothers, family members. And you, as a Biafra, you keep quiet. You know, and not just keep quiet, even they are fighting to support the terrorists. They are even fighting against us that are protecting our land. You forgive me. Now keep as well. If there's anything we are doing now that we have never uh done right before, we ask God to forgive us. But we do that, whatever we do, so we can still live for another day. Because we cannot let them kill us. Oh, we cannot let them overrun our land, take, you know, take over our land, chase us out of our, where are we going to go? Where will we go? And uh, I was yesterday having conversation with one of our honorable. So many of these people, because of the poverty that they have they have caused of for a lot of Biafrans. Growing up from some that are, have the opportunity to even uh, you know, attend higher education, they join cult, or two. Cults that make them to even be sucking blood like the enemies. So please, people like that, disease from your evil, just like these people in People's Club is a cult. If you are in People's Club, you know you are in a secret society, you are a cult of people that suck blood. That is here, Hernandez and the one others, all of them, they are in the same cult. So please, if you are among them, disease from it, it will never be well if you keep killing Biafrans, committing all this evil. Looking at the long run, what goes around comes around. And this time around, we'll be holding people accountable. Like the group of people that was here earlier, trying to disrupt what we are doing. They are the sabotwa we are talking about. And we say that this is what we live in a generational cause, that is what we mean. The audio that was played or the voice that was played earlier, is this person probably a Biafra or a Fulani born in Biafra land that speak Biafra language. Saying something that is not real. Lying against innocent man. You know, it's heartbreaking. And they have deceived a lot of Biafrans. You see this audio that we played earlier? For those that don't know, Mazyo Gichukunkir, and who I'm, what I'm up to, and whether I'm genuine or not, it can be misleading, just like that, before you know. It would be like the independent media that have say all kind manner of things just to destroy our BDF, destroy our funding system, just to cripple the government, cripple the movement. But these people will suffer, they will suffer, they will suffer. Please, all the evil ones, disease from it, if not, my goodness, you know, logunuga, wabusa, wike. Joy will disappear from your home, will disappear from your family. Because if we can't get to you now, I give, I give you one, you know, who caused you and that cause, that is the word we can utter out. And that word will fly with the air to wherever you are, we affect you. Everything on earth will work against all the evil people, they will.
And I wanted to say that all those youths, in addition to what our APM said, all those youths. And I wanted to say that all those youths, in addition to what our APM said, all those youths that are walking around in Biafra land, a shame on to you. If you allow Fulani to come and take your ancestral land, kill your mothers, rape your women, what are you, what are you a man for? All you know is to join, join cult and dress up and walk around with your saggy pants and all that. Why your land is being taken away, you are the worstest spam, if you can not dress up and defend your land. You are the worstest spam, you are a disgrace. Thank you my people, and the people of Ikom, please protect your land, protect that forest. Because that, that forest for thousands of years, thousands of years, our ancestors have used that land to do great things, that forest of Ikom, that place, please protect it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you mighty. Thank you, please let's sing for mighty dot for his donation support.
Alright. Honorable mighty dirty, they are in my, mbo mbo. Honorable mighty, my ramah, mbo mbo, yeah, she may raise the head, na mother, pouring na ya, oh yo yo. Hey you, Dalu, I can't shout my.
Hey, hey, hey.
The gods of the mighty, it is well with you.
There were, Honorable Betty, your hand is up, over to you.
Fuck is the fuck? Get out, you fool people. She never hold on.
He's the evil one that uh, carried Betty's uh name.
I suspected it because I've been taking them out all this time.
Hmm, Mary, Mary, over to you, unmute yourself.
Wash up.
Mary, unmute yourself.
So I'm trying, okay.
Our sister, I thought this was. It's me, oh ma. Good evening. Well done my sister.
Yes, good evening everyone, good evening our APM. Good evening Information Minister, good evening for all our mother today. Good evening Ikom Biafra, good evening our APM, you are welcome. Yes, today for Ikom behalf of Iroh Iboam, I would like to pick, I want to drink, and it's because it's very, very long time, Ikom eh pound wine.
Hey.
I want to drink from wine for ten thousand Ajema. And I want to welcome our lovely APM with ten thousand Ajema, that is eh twenty thousand AJ.
Wow, AJ.
Not Ajema, AJ.
Yeah.
AJ, and it will be because behalf of Iroh Iboam and from Iobu Petru, I meet of Iroh Iboam. Thank you very much, thank you our APM Ikom, good evening, see you guys then, thank you our, all our mommy.
Thank you, honorable Mary, thank you so much. I'm a rebel Mary, eh dea ni ma, mbo mbo. Honorable Mary, my ramah, mbo mbo. Oh, yeah, she may raise the, na mother, pouring na ya, oh yo yo. Thank you, I can't shout oh, our sister Mary.
Thank you man.
Thank you, thank you Mary, thank you.
Information.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we have uh, Biafra EU rep, now this, this one should be impersonator. Biafra EU rep, unmute yourself.
Congratulations.
Uh huh, we know it's gonna be impersonator.
Losers.
Uh huh, alright. APM has given a speech and it was well dies. We salute all Biafrans that have made it to Ikom State Town Hall Meeting. And as we continue, the floor is open for you to support the town hall meeting, support Ikom State Town Hall Meeting.
Biafra is all he asks for. Every night and day he's shouting and pointing to one direction. But his own people not blind and saying it's causing division. Tell me why, 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 someone who sacrificed his life for you and I. Tell me why, 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 out of sight has become matter of mind. He's asking for nothing and cares about not for this people emancipation. Ay, no, 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 no. Guys, there is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue, in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue, the morning sunrise.
After that what nest? After you fight your own fellow Biafrans? Will that change your life? Will that make your village better? The answer is no. Please, everyone should trade with caution. Because uh there will be a payback. Everybody will answer according to their deeds. So there is a payback. Please, all the youths. Ask yourself question and be careful. Be very careful. Ask yourself question, this hope. And Alan Unyema that's not trying to employ you to fight your fellow citizens. Where is Alan Unyema? When your community? People be killed massacred? The same people that massacred your community? The same people that are chasing out of your community? Are the same people that wanna bribe you or give you money to fight and kill your community more? Not be you should be there. Is that not, is it not heartbreaking? The same people that said they will give you amnesty, for what? You are not a terrorist, you are not a criminal. So what is, yeah, what are you talking about amnesty? What is it for? What it is, is that they want to bribe you. To their side, so that you can. Fight their fight for them to kill your own people. To kill your own brothers. Please don't collect that peanut. For you to go fight against your own fellow Biafrans. Because if you do. Biafra will come after you. There's this video that was just trading few days ago. Why I didn't really want to comment on that video? It's uh. Whatever his name is, he's going nowhere, because uh. We will deal with him, we already know that. Because we know who sent him is the Nigerian terrorist group, that's who he's working for. One of those that have collected the amnesty, I don't know whether any amount they gave him. To come and do that nonsense, whatever he did. Please. Fellow citizens, youth of Biafra. Don't collude with Alan Unyema and Nigerian terrorist country to fight your own brothers, to fight your own people. The BDF in our land, they are there to protect your life. If the BDF is not there, ask yourself, what do you think will happen? They will overrun Biafra land. The whole Okwe will be militarized everywhere in Biafra land. By then, you won't even see nothing, you won't even move, you can't do nothing. Because you cannot operate freely. In a territory or region where. Where Nigerian terrorists militarize. Even as of now, look at the checkpoint everywhere. There's some places that you have to come out of your car, your vehicle, or whatever means of transportation. That you are in going from point A to point B, they have to force you to come out, even raise your hand. To like half a kilometer before. You can now uh uh, you can now drive out again. Please, don't accept this useless amnesty. Whatever, there's nothing that will. You are one, you are not a terrorist, number one. Number two, you are not a rebel. Number three, you are not committing any crime in your own land. If you're asking for your freedom, it's your right. If you're defending yourself, it's your, if it's your right as well, please. Uh Honorable Minister of Information, I think uh you're going to do some program to enlighten and educate Biafra more on this, because it's very, very important. You know, they always come with this playbook of divide and conquer, divide and rule, and for us to keep fighting. Ourself, please, we are all, you know. We need to be vigilant, because some of our youth, because of the poverty. Some might just collect money that they can use temporarily. And at the end of the day, you see them resorting. Doing like the video that was flying few days ago. So please, uh. If you're a youth in Biafra land, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you have to go and fight against the BDF or fight against your fellow citizens. Everything we are doing is how to protect our land. How to protect you. How to protect Biafra, how we'll get a better country. Country that will compete, country that you won't lack. Country that you feel better, you know, and be proud of your own country called Biafra. Thank you from here, and I greet uh. A special greeting to the administration of ICOM and all the rep and admin that are still here with us this late hour. We appreciate everyone, we appreciate what you are doing. Biafra is here, don't give up. Don't give up, please keep doing what you are doing. And for those enemies that are fighting us on social media. Since you don't want to join us to fight this great fight, keep doing what you are doing. Because the more you keep doing what you are doing, we'll be stronger, tougher. And even better. But we encourage you to stop that your nonsense, because uh it won't lead you nowhere, rather. Who hold everyone accountable. It's not gonna be well with all of you. Thank you, Ndewo.
Ndewo, APM. I bless you.
Thank you, APM, thank you. We have uh Mighty Johan is up again, over to you, sir.
This is.
This one.
Damn you people, you can't stop us.
Oh my god. He saw that Mighty has spoke before, so he decided to use Mighty's name. Okay.
You know people that are doing this. These are people that have.
Fuck you, shut your.
Yes.
Yeah, another one, yeah. Another one, Oluchuku. APM, go ahead.
Yeah, they are the one we are laying costs on. And they think we are joking. Uh. Anyway. They think we are joking, but the more they do what we are doing, we are not giving up. And we are still moving. We are not going to stop. We are not going to stop. So they can keep doing whatever they are doing. Next month, I can win result. What is today's date? Twenty four or twenty fifty? Very soon. Everybody will bring their report card. Who's, the result will be out. And all the evil ones we hide in shame. Shame will be their portion. We have disgraced them, they don't even know where to hide again. So what they, thank you, Ndewo.
They are fighting themselves now. Shame on them.
Alright, APM, thank you for. Grazing the town hall meeting of ICOM and your entire entourage. Thank you, APM, thank you everyone that have tuned in and everyone that. Uh. Participated in one way and another. And we are drawing the curtain. I hope um. The ICOM's state admin is still here.
Maas, this sunny.
Yes, sir.
We also want to use the opportunity to appreciate all the subvert, the evil ones that have, that have tuned in to collect their own cost. So that they can go and share it with their entire family.
Yes, so.
It's not a joke. When they will be sleeping in their dream, they won't know what is hitting them. You will wake up and say, I have a bad dream. You have not started, that is, it's just going to be a joke. But uh. Uh, are they the one already? See, this Zoom user here. Uh, Brige USA, you know, this is how they coming, right?
Yes.
They don't know that, we already know their identity.
Let us see them, huh?
The code already start working.
Uh huh. Zoom user, admit yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh huh. Thank you so much.
Oh, that is.
Please, honorable, honorable bishop, the real Father Bishop, please, this. They always come with this.
Thank you, very good, yes, my laptop, my laptop has been playing up.
Ndewo.
I thank ICOM, I thank ICOM. Please, go, continue working very, very hard. Your history is. It's remarkable. And I thank you, Sunny, for staying there doggedly. Uh Chinia, thank you for being there for the choir. Yes, I want to strengthen, you know, support our. APM with thirty um the euro this evening. For his speech, his speech is so moving. Speech is moving, and every, every day, every day, he's get better, he gets better and gets better. You know, because he, and he's, he's running with the vision of Namdekanu and Saman Eba. I encourage you to hold that mantle, run with it, we are behind you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Honorable Bishop, thank you. All, all I'm asking are let Biafra just come in mass support. They will see what will happen. All these useless, illegitimate governors, I bet you, one night, none of them will even sleep in Biafra land. Both will do that. Nga two hundred, they will say, oh, they don't know that Mazi Yoge Chukwunke, where is this one from? That's the question they will be asking.
Exactly.
They will say, where? Because uh. Uh, I thank God that you, as a bishop, you don't come here to say, let's pray and forgive them all. They will have a problem, because these people, they have caused damage, they have.
Oh my god, oh my god.
Uh?
We pray that they are evil, evil, they are evil, will hunt them, that's what the Bible says. They are evil, will hunt them.
Hunt them now, let it start now.
Yeah, we are praying.
Evil.
Yeah, UK, you can start the formidable um intercession group. The evil will hunt them.
Yeah. Yes. Even the Bible says, there is no place for the wicked. I don't think it's a coincidence or a mistake. The wicked have no place. The audio that was played earlier, that man, I hope he get my message. Good if.
I, I think that man has been saying something good about.
They are the one, they are, they are the one, you know, this is how they, they discourage people from homeland with this, their audio, is very damaging. And these are evil people I'm talking about. No governor in Biafra land that I even have his contact. Even in the whole entire Nigeria, I don't even know.
I know, I know, I know.
That is number one. But look at how they label me, tag me that I'm brother to who I don't know. Can you imagine? And they were secretly deceiving people. That man, his name, Gulamu Gunuga, Musi, Ocho. Unless you change from your evil way. Nothing.
Yes, yes, uh.
All the trouble, the ten ways who treat the terrorists, that is the same who will treat you all. Evil people. And when Biafra totally re- uh 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 restore. Those attacks that survive able to. Make it to Biafra. The land of Biafra will never bless them.
A man.
With agony for the rest of their lives.
Oh, Jehovah.
All who are kazunywa myself, that person would be asking to everyone, oh, say, God, take my life, this suffering is. This suffering will not be solved. I, I, I came across this video yesterday when I was going through YouTube, so I still let me watch uh. I saw this clip, I still let me just listen a little bit. I'm like. This man said that, oh, get you Khunkira and your brother, the governor, do they have collect money? Collect which money from? The same Nigeria that I'm fighting against.
That's what they think, so I want to sign on it.
Probably you should be that. The same Nigeria that I would go to Washington this. If you guys even actually know the way I talk in Washington, it's more brutal than this. I condemn Nigeria to the hell. Tell, say the way it is. Because I hate Nigeria with passion. Even before I'm appoint uh uh appointed as APM. Uh, you know, you're listening to my speech when we have uh our fundraising, I always said it. I hate Nigeria with passion, that even if I, I said it two years ago, last year I said it before. If I have opportunity, I will burn it down. As a fact, to tell you, it's not a country. If you keep the existence of Nigeria. Nigeria will kill us all. Nigeria don't care. Even after they label Nigeria uh uh as a terrorist country by. By UK, uh no, by Canada. Do you know that the politicians, they don't care? They don't care. Where is former go, illegitimate governor, the one that parade himself at uh Anambra, that killed Biafra too? He's not enjoying life in Georgia, United States of America. Because the same player that he destroyed is not fitting for him. To live a normal life, to enjoy. All they do is to destroy the entire community. Burn down everywhere, destroy the entire country. Then they will sue, they will run away. I heard Wike bought a, a house of over two million, is it in Florida somewhere? With the, with the. They loot wicked evil people. All of them, I got one wicked, if, if not, if you don't affect them now, their family, generation, lineage. Because their family are not condemning it. Like this evil ones, them, Ku Plotters and others. Their family, they don't want their crime, their evil, to affect their children. They have, their children have to condemn whatever their parents are doing. If not, all got, all of them. They will bear the consequences. They will suffer it, because our land is bleeding. Can you imagine in Biafra land? A Biafran child will wake up in the morning. Thinking that the day he will come back to his family, his parents, in a good manner. Being, you know, back home healthy. Before you know, they will kidnap that child, this terrorist country called Nigeria. Sometimes they gun this innocent Biafran child down. Sometimes they even. You know, harvest uh this innocent Biafra.
Yes.
All kind of atrocity. And all this is happening in Biafra land. And you have the ones that call them themselves on the easy. If I have the opportunity, if it's something that Biafrans can fund what we are doing in our own style, in our own way. All the whole, the ones that are bringing these terrorists, all of them, they will sleep, they won't wake up.
Terrible.
I will come, do you all remember what happened in Ghana? By uh, what's the president's name? Rollins, right?
Rollins, yeah.
When Ghana is going through mess. And Ghana already regained their independence from British government and the Ghana, it's a, they have their own food territory controlled. There's a time they are in big mess that Ghanas even have to find their green or partial way to the zoo. Called Nigeria at the time, that they, too many of them in Nigeria, they have to chase them back again, that's where the slogan of Ghana must go. But what? He, what put Ghana, where Ghana is today, is what that Rollins did. Blaming all the whole innocent, before I use a word that won't be fitting here. If it is kill, kill all of them, get them out. So that the young generation can continue. If you don't, then we kill everybody. If you allow, hope, hope will kill the whole community and the same hope will implant somebody again that will. They need to be stopped. All easy in Biafra land. Anyone that is colluding with the Nigerian terrorists is a terrorist. We will treat that as a, as a terrorist. If it is, if you are colluding with Nigeria, you are a terrorist. These fools should be ashamed of themselves. A foreign country of over five thousand mile, cannot have condemned Nigeria, call Nigeria terrorists. And all these fool call, call themselves American veteran of evil, whatever. Usually, they are living in America for the rest of their life. They see how beautiful it is here, they see how organized, they see how country is supposed to be. They see how the government care for our citizens. And they have theft life. They live in a country here in United States that. The light can never blink a second, sometimes for years, you have full electricity every day. After seeing how people supposed to live. When these fools go back home, they cannot fight for their own people. From here, even from here, to give them a better life. Shame unto all of them. You take your only luck, evil people. And they are using our leader Mazinamdekanu for their own political gain. When Saludos fight jumping, every day he will run to go see Mazinamdekanu to take picture. To parade himself in front of Biafrans. So Biafrans will look at him like he care for Biafrans. All of them. And I also blame the legal team and the family of our leader. To allow all these people to use our leader Mazinamdekanu to cast out. They have to be careful. I'm sending message, they have to be careful. What they, they are using Mazinamdekanu, our leader's life for polit, for politics. They have to be careful who visit Mazin. The same people that are visiting him, they can't even care about his welfare, his where bill. Bill, be, uh, bin, they don't care. They don't even care for what our leader Mazinamdekanu believe in. Our leader Mazinamdekanu believe in justice, believe in freedom. Our legal team should be careful, those that they, they allowed to see our leader Mazinamdekanu, they have to be careful. They have to be careful, because they can be using our leader Mazinamdekanu for politics. Enough of this nonsense. All the evil ones. They can go free now, thinking it's okay. Our choice, I got go mine, we have thousands of years to live in our God-given land, Biafra land. Every family, every individual, whatever they have done, they will be accountable for it. And this generational cost, time is coming, those that survive it will make them work for Biafra. For rest of the hard label. Very hard one, for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, APM, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Brige USA NNS.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need to be short too.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, let's sing for, let's minister comfort before.
Hold on one second, Biko.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you, mommy, I am you, God bless you.
Well, yes, thank you, thank you, my Minister of Information. Thank you, uh Deputy, uh. And thank you, uh. To all the in, people who attended this uh uh town hall. I, I. I, I mean, I am outraged, very outraged. But um. In any case, let me give a lot of credit to my APM. Um, he, his message is resounding, really. Uh, I, I mean, around the world. And um. And everything that he has said. If they think it's a joke. Um. Let them think so. Because uh there is God. There is Chukwoki Ke. And Chukwoki Ke mandated that Biafra must come. And so I give to my uh uh Excellency. I mean, to His Excellency, uh. Uh, Mazi, again, my APM, I give him a. A, a kudos, a big kudos, uh. Uh, for this, you know, for the speech he made. I also salute. My Prime Minister. Uh. His Excellency. Mazi Simon Ekma. I also seize this opportunity to remember and salute. My leader, Mazi Namdekanu. And I, again, I, I ask the Most High. To, to continue to strengthen him each and every second he spends in that dungeon. And um. Continuing with this uh. Uh. Uh, town hall, I, I give a lot of uh. Uh, credit to ICOM, ICOM, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, ICOM State de facto. And um. And I thank all the uh uh officials of ICOM for, for their effort. To realizing, you know, what time it is. In our struggle to be able to stage and to be able to uh 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 bring Biafrans. Or invite Biafrans to this meeting. I thank them from the bottom of my heart. And uh, and on behalf. Of Brige USA North and South. And on behalf of ICOM, I also would like to. Uh, invite the following states to come and partake. If not now, in the future. Uh, in the central region, and those states are, I believe, uh uh. I know Aludo is already setting the pace, but they are also in the central region. But I would include Ikumessia, Ikumessia, I hope I'm saying it right. Uh, Odumebu State. Uh, uh, Ikemba State, Olu State, uh. As an Owere State, uh, or Kiwe State. Uh, let me see, uh, I believe Ebube, uh, uh. Capital Territory. I, I, I may be missing one or, maybe one or two states. But I, I, I believe I named it all. And so, I am uh, I am contributing two hundred Ajama. To support. Our Prime Minister's speech and also to pick up color. And I thank you all. In the name of.
Dallo, honorable, God bless you, I can't chant the reggae, oh. Dallo. Dallo. I thought you have slept though, you didn't see people that came with your own name? Just screaming out your name and your, and your background.
Really?
Yeah, I thought you slept.
Alright, thank you. Honorable, thank you so much for your donation. We continue.
Thank you, sir.
And we have two more impersonators that have come to impersonate Ikachukusivi and Noye. Let's open them. Uh, Ikachukusivi, the one that his hand is up, over to you.
Biafrans.
Uh huh, we see. Play, you want to run? Biafra message for us. Ah, the other one, don't already run. The other Noye, don't already run. No, don't run, oh, come back, oh.
Thank you.
Uh, Noye MD, admit yourself. Yeah, wait, they run, they go. Unmit yourself, Noye MD.
Case you hold, please wait.
Uh, alright, we have to call it a day. We appreciate everyone. And we call on um. we call on the the constate administrator to bring it to an end today.
Uh, thank you, everybody in the house. That we here in Nikom, we are so much glad. In fact, we are very much happy for your presence in this town hall meeting. You made us to feel like a people. You made us to feel like being part of Biafra territory. In fact, for some parts now, uh we felt as if we are not belonging. But what you are going to do with us this night has made us, you have given us that sense of belonging. We are grateful to all of you. We are grateful to our acting prime minister. We are grateful to you, honorable Sony Akparawa Minister for information. We are grateful to every Brigi cabinet member here in this program. Homeland administrators and all the rest. I lack words tonight to appreciate. I lack words tonight to express my feeling. I am so much happy. As me Chukokikabiama blessed all of you abundantly in the name of Yahweh Shua. The God of mercy continue to unite us as one as our forefathers have ever been. We will be more united the more. I will say good evening, good morning, good afternoon, depending on your location. And on behalf of Ikum people, shalom. By our town hall meeting, it is a promise I'm going to fulfill. I am going to comfort it life by wine. I saw if anybody is interested. If anybody know how to do it, we will do it together in this town hall meeting. Thank you very much brothers and sisters. I say good night from here.
Darlo.
Thank you so much, God bless you.
Don't forget to.
No problem, ma.
Yeah.
We are.
Don't forget the eh, don't forget the Dikaakan.
Now you come now.
Eh, Kaiko, yes.
Thank you, thank.